Okay, thank you. Good evening, welcome to the City of Groton Committee of the whole for Monday night, August 26, 2024. For the record, we are Zoom and we're also, we're hybrid, we're Zoom and we're also in, in person. And the, I am proud to report that the entrance is open. So where the front entrance has been completed and is now open for entry. Roll call?
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Attali, Counselor Sheffield, Counselor Norris, are present.
Okay, so we have a quorum, new business or referrals. So the first one is Board of Ethics application with Margaret Robinson. Margaret, if you could come up, I will need to do something with the, make sure it's ready for her. So you have an application for Board of Ethics. We are, we have a posi, we have an opening in Ethics and I guess recently there was a, there was a meeting that they were not able to have because they didn't have a quorum. So it is important that we have a, another member. Ethics doesn't meet that often, but when they do meet, it's important that they, that they have the ability to meet. So I bring that before you. Any questions from Mayor, or from the council? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Um, I just want to say thank you for being willing to serve. The Board of Ethics is a really important part of the government and we need volunteers to run. So luckily this is not one that meets as often as we do. And I think, is there still more openings on it or does this, this fills the board? Perfect. So yeah, mostly I looked at your resume, you've worked in school systems, I know, you know, a lot. That's a lot of interaction with different levels. So to me it makes sense that you would have a sense of ethics also in teaching. You kind of have to teach that to, to kids. So I again, just want to say thank you for, for being willing to be on the board to help us to run the city.
Well, thank you for having me.
Counselor Sheffield?
I guess the, I was, the question was answered as far as, I guess we are full staff of, of the commission. This will, okay, so we're, we just lost one person on the ethics, okay. And Ms. Robinson, again, thank you for coming forward to serve. Now how long have you lived in DeGrotton, in Groton, Connecticut, in the city or?
Um, well, I was born here.
Okay.
Okay, and then I left for a few years. So I was born in New London and graduated from Fitch, didn't live here in the middle. Then I went off for a while and then I came back in 1986 and I've been here ever since.
What year did you graduate from?
1970.
Seven, okay, okay. And you've been back since 86, you said?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
But it's very confusing to people. Where did you, where were you born? New London. Where'd you graduate from high school? Groton. Where were you brought up? Not here?
Yeah, I see the, you know, the different areas, you know, around the country where you've gone and so like I said, I was welcomed back for, for quite some time. And now how long is this commission last for? How many, how long do we?
What did we say in the thing? It's gonna ex-
It'll be a four-year term?
No.
Okay, so she'll have to reapply in 25.
Right, that's in the resolution, it's part of the pack.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Anything else, anyone else? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to Mayor and Council, September 3rd, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, thank you, Margaret.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Finance, Property Tax Refund, Pfizer Fuel Cell?
This is a tax refund based on litigation that was settled with, with the town. There was some, there was, I guess I will say a disagreement with how the fuel cell, if it was exempt from taxes or not. The assessor felt that it did not fall into the exemption rule. It was contested by Fuel Cell, which then they ultimately did get the favorable outcome in it. So what this 384,000, for lack of a better, is the refund of property taxes that dates back from fiscal year 2018, which was the 2006 grant list through the 2023 fiscal year and the 2021 grant list that was paid in as, as the city's portion of taxes. The town has this as well.
Okay, and this is the first time we brought something like this to you. We have, there have been other settlements that we've lost. Ron, you want to explain how, how those have been treated?
So there was a couple other ones that there was, some judgments against a personal property and that was one of our bigger taxpayers. That agreement was that they would be subsequently refunded upcoming tax years, taxes, they would have it offset. So there was no payment coming out, but in this one, because this is a one-time and they will not be a taxpayer in the city, we are due the whole entire refund for all the taxes that were paid in. So that's why we're bringing this one to you because it is actual an expenditure that will come out.
Correct, thank you. Counselor Sheffield? Oh, I'm, well, Counselor Sheffield, I'll go to you.
Okay, um, would this be a one-time refund payment or is it the installments coming back?
Nope, this is going to be a one-time payment. It's a lump sum payment that's due and again, it covers all the taxes that they've paid in since they've been on the tax roll.
And how would that, that affect us down the line as far as?
So, so it will, the way that this will, will offset our tax revenues because it will reduce that being a refund coming out of there. So my guess is in this fiscal year, we will come up short on budget for tax revenues, but hopefully there'll be other revenue streams that will offset that.
And when will we kind of find out when, if we're short or, you know, would that be like next spring, will something like that, we'll have an idea?
Yeah, from, from, as a total, it'll be next spring, but from the taxes, we'll be able to see it pretty much immediately because all our tax payments are all due in July at the one installment. So I mean, they do trickle in throughout the year, but the, the big portion comes, does come in in July.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. So the amount listed on here, is that the amount the city owes or is that the total? So the town is also paying back their portion of the taxes?
Correct.
So what's the total amount?
The town's portion that they had to refund was 1.7, so just over two.
Okay, so the 383,469 is the city's portion of the tax?
Just the city's portion, correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, town had a much bigger, bigger bogey. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to Mayor and Council Meeting of September 3rd, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, Groton Utilities? So the first one is purchase two boom trucks from Altech.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. So I'm here tonight to request the purchase of two brand-new articulating aerial trucks to replace two existing vehicles that we have in the fleet. The two ones that we have to be replaced are both 2018 models. The first one's got 100,000 miles on it right now, the second one's got roughly 93,000 miles on it. These particular vehicles are utilized by the on-call staff, so for off-hours emergencies, so they do take these vehicles home. Both are, you know, readying to be replaced. We received proposals, we put it out to bid, we received proposals from three organizations, ETI Equipment Technology, they're out of Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. They, basically 40% of their, the specs, they did not meet on the proposal. The second proposal was from Custom Truck, One Source, they're out of Missouri. They also did not meet the bid specs. Basically this vehicle was much more like a cable TV boom truck and would take roughly $50,000 to outfit that truck to make it safe to be worked for electrical utilities. And the last truck was from Altech Industries Incorporated, they're out of Bingham, Alabama. They also supplied the two vehicles that we currently have in-house, the 2018s. They both fully met the bid specs. The concern that we have with them is that the delivery for these vehicles is roughly 30 months out. So they did offer, just so you know, a small trade-in value on these vehicles. The first one was 15,000, the second was 20,000. But there's also a note in their fine print note where they're stating that Altech will revisit the trade-in values roughly six months, three to six months prior to the completion of a new vehicle and trade-in. So honestly, you know, the miles that we put on these vehicles, I really would request that you waive the, that value because I don't know if I'm going to get anything at all three years from now, right? So the price for each of those two vehicles is 221,655. So between the two vehicles, it's 443,330. I'm asking for a 5% contingency on them, which is an additional 22,166.50. So the total request for tonight from me is for 465,475.50. And I'm open to any questions you have with these vehicles.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you for the thorough explanation. So this is a budgeted expense?
It is.
So we were planning on replacing them this, well, this year already.
Absolutely, so, yeah. We knew that they were coming up, so they're highly used, the, the staff prefers to drive these vehicles, they're more convenient to get around than the larger trucks, so they're very popular.
And so, did you say, are we definitely not able to get them for 30?
30 months, I believe is exactly what they said, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. Assembly, yeah.
So we're seeing the same thing in police vehicles, fire vehicles and in our utility trucks. The, the shortest amount of time that we've seen is 18 months.
Yeah.
So typically it's 18 to 24, for something that's specialized, they took us out to 30 months.
So do you think the current vehicles are going to survive 30 months?
They will. So we just recently did another evaluation on them where I captured the run hours, the mileage and, and the staff went through them. We maintained them very well because of their usage, but we'll get the three years out. So it's something that, you know, knowing that the difficulty in getting replacements is so long, we had planned for this and expecting that we'll, so I expect they'll probably have 140, 150,000 miles on them when we get rid of them. They are diesels, so I feel confident with the engines, but they, they do get the use, you know?
Sounds good, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to Mayor and Council, September 3rd, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Annual Report, FY 2024? FY 24.
Each year, the commission renders a state of the, of the utility by giving an annual report to the council. This is required by charter and I, there is no action required on this report. So the statements are made by the commission, presented to you. And what we do is we pass it around, we give the highlights of the finances and then go through each of the other areas of responsibility in the utility and make a list of general things that went on, a state of the electric water in sewer division and also some of the communications and community outreach details. And it just basically, I guess, gets put in the record.
Okay, this is informing only, so any questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just wanted to comment on the, I think, the usage of our, the Facebook page and the website for, we did have a couple of major outages. I just want to remind people that you guys do post on Facebook and on the website when there's an outage, so that's like the first place to go. And you usually update that same post so people can see when the power should be back on. So I just want to encourage more people to follow the Facebook page because it is really useful when we have those power outages and I see that we've had an increase in people following it, so that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Norris?
A little jet lag, so please bear with me and explain this. So your water division was a net loss of 1.1 million, which was 36% below budget, but that only equaled $300,000. So could you tell me, was that a case of sheer revenue for the 1.1 million loss or was it actually due to increase in expenditures?
No, it was majorly a revenue issue. There's been a, so the water and sewer companies both base the revenue based on the meter usage of the water.
Sure.
When it rains a lot and it's really wet, the tendency is to use less. And plus, on the sewer side, there's a loss due to some industrial deduct meters which have higher than expected deducts.
I guess just for, because I'm not understanding, so if I take that 300,000 of net loss plus the loss in revenue, I guess, which is 500,000, I'm still trying to come up with how the net loss was 1.1 million.
Are you going to be going through the finances?
Not today, I believe there was a budgeted loss in that budget for this fiscal year. It was actually budgeted to have a loss, however, the loss came in, $300,000 greater than, so I think it was like a $800,000 loss that was budgeted for the current fiscal year. So then that gets you to 1.1, so it was 300,000 below, which was driven mainly by the 500,000 of below budget revenues.
Thank you.
But I will be going through the, the financials, they did just get finalized for June, so next meeting, we can go through them.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Ron.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Police Department Chief? First one is semi-annual software support project.
Right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we are well on our way to implementing the changeover in our records management system to Next Gen. As you remember from prior budget conversations, that was purchased with the ARPA funding and that is our next level as far as records management system is concerned. The other thing that was nice about that system is it's a local company. Again, just as reminders, it's a local company and a lot of our area or sister agencies are using it, so we have compatibility with every reporting systems. However, our deadline shifted a month. We thought that we would be able to cut over in September. We're now not going to be able to cut over until October. That was some difficulty between IT and Next Gen as far as software and access was concerned. And then additionally, we would have had to maintain a 30-day parallel system anyway because if there are any issues with Next Gen, then we can go back to, and right now we're using IMC Central Square, so we'd be able to go back to Central Square again and stay with our old system before there's a finalized cut over. Additionally, there's also some data migration that has to take place, which is a pretty lengthy process, so that's also taking part in that last 30 days so that at the end of this, we don't have a dual system, we only have a single system, but it's seamless as far as records management is concerned because all of the historical data is contained within our new system. So, that's a lengthy explanation, but that gets us back to, I need to extend our IMC contract. We asked for a, month by month, they do not do that. The least they could do, least time period they could do is six months. Unfortunately, we have to have a records management system in order to maintain our police records, so hence the $10,000 expense. We do pay $20,000 a year for our annual, so that would make sense in that it's six months, so it's $10,000.
Okay, I'll open the floor to the council, Deputy Mayor Depot?
How is this going to affect your budget?
It's not, we were budgeted for this anyway. So we have in our service contract and repairs, we have the software licensing fee anyway set aside for IMC. It would have been at the $20,000 rate.
Even though we were switching over?
Correct, because we didn't know exactly when the cut over was going to take place. So the Next Gen purchase was above and beyond what the operating budget was. And like I said, it wouldn't have been possible unless we went to Opera for that anyway, which we did.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Sheffield?
Chief, we got to make sure your name is on the place, on, to ship the bill. I said the previous chief, I said your name's not on there, so you got to make sure that we're billing, you know?
Yes, sir.
With your name on it.
Yes, sir, I got you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council Meeting, September 3rd, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, purchase two pursuit vehicles?
Yes, sir, so again, budgeted item for us. This was another discussion point that we had, not only here in this setting, but also in the town's formats as well regarding our vehicle purchase. If you remember that the vehicle plan is to, within the next five years, is to get our fleet down so that it is within the warranty period for major repairs. That's the three-year transmission and engines, that's what I'm looking at, or 60,000 miles. Right now, our average, again, just as a reminder, our average age of the fleet was 10, is 10.2 years. With this purchase plan that originally we came up with, it would get us down to 3.2 years. However, we were cut a vehicle, so obviously that'll be extended a little bit, but in the meantime, we still have to replace vehicles that are high mileage and high maintenance. So these two Dodge purchases, which are off-state bid, would replace two 2016 vehicles. So we will remove those from the inventory and in turn, use them as trickle-down to replace some 2006 administrative-type vehicles that we use for training or transport, et cetera. So it, it does improve our, the age of our fleet a little bit.
Okay, I'll open the floor to council. Counselor Sheffield?
Is there a trade-in with the?
No, sir, so what we've been doing is we'll turn our older cars, so now we're talking about 2006, 2008's, which will actually go to auction. We turn them over to Finance and we just had an auction, I think we just had a second review as well, so that'll be the, the process going forward.
Okay. I'll take a motion to move this to Mayor and Council Meeting of September 3rd, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, okay? Stay there. Chief Tompkins, if you could come up, please? Okay, what you should have in front of you is a revised ordinance that has the paragraph highlighted in yellow, okay? So this is the inline, inline of duty declarant for police and fire personnel. Basically what happened was Thursday afternoon, I was notified by CCM of something that changed in the Connecticut general statutes and basically you have that in front of you, but basically what happens is unless the municipality has an ordinance, a line of duty death for pulmonary embolism, heart attack and stroke is made by the respective chief. I'm bringing to you a recommended ordinance only to, and my logic behind this is to, instead of having two different standards, you have one standard that is held with the mayor, still consulting with the two chiefs and anybody else that we would need. We need medical people, obviously, we might need the city attorney involved, but then we would have a meeting to figure out, to determine rather whether or not the cause of death was a line of duty death. Okay, so I've invited both the chiefs to come and, and to talk about this a little bit, to give their thoughts on this. My logic behind this is that you have the mayor and a group that are making this decision. So what's driving this is if, if there is not an ordinance in place by one October, it automatically defaults to the two chiefs will call whether or not it's a line of duty death. I reached out to John Burton, they, they got short notice, he found out last week too. Their process is 45 days, so they can't get there from here. We can, but what it requires us to do is have the first reading on September 3rd and then we would need a special meeting on the 30th of September, the 5th, the 5th, correction, the 5th Monday of the month in order to meet the requirements for this ordinance. So. Chief Tompkins?
Thank you.
So Chief Tompkins and I had a conversation this afternoon and just go ahead and talk about the things you and I talked about. Talk about your concerns, express your concerns.
I will.
That's why I wanted to have you here.
Um, I thanked the mayor, obviously, as he said, we, we did have a conversation this morning, this afternoon, and he was very open to me coming and expressing my opinion, which is contrary to his. I do not believe there should be an ordinance, I believe that the decision should left, rest with the chiefs of the department. And part of my reasoning with that is that, you know, we are the subject matter professionals, we know the individuals, we know the job, we know what, you know, is done day in and day out and therefore are, you know, we have an informed opinion and decision-making process. To be honest, I'm going to be frank, I'm not going to use names because names don't come into it because I'm not going to be chief forever, nor is Chief Burton and, and we have no idea who the mayor's going to be. But when you take the process out of the chief's hands and you put it into a politician's hands and, and a city attorney's hands, I feel that the decision's always going to be, no, it's not a line of duty death. There are, there are criteria, it's only can be up to 24 hours after, so for instance, firefighter who's been here for 25 years, works his 24-hour shift or her 24-hour shift, they go to multiple calls, they go to calls in the middle of the night, whatever they may be, they get up, they go home, at 2:00 in the afternoon, they go out in the yard, they drop dead. Right, that's what we're talking about. Now, as the fire chief, I could say, you know, I declare that a line of duty death. With this ordinance, it would go to the mayor and then it says they shall talk to the chief, they also will talk to the attorney and then they're going to make a determination whether they believe it's a line of duty death or not. And where that matters is that there's federal monies, so if it's considered a line of duty death, there is federal public safety officer benefits, cash payout, there's also money for the ch- There's also money for the children. There is state monies for tuition, free tuition for state colleges, things of that nature. That a line of duty death allows the survivors to benefit from. So I, I just believe, and the reverse argument can be made. I mean, I understand that. While any, the fire chief could just say, of course, I'm going to give it to everybody, right? If that person dies, then they're going to get it. Yeah, I appreciate that. I think here in the city of Groton, I, I believe that, that can happen no matter where. But certainly in some departments where, and it frustrates me. I, I mean, I get emails all the time for line of duty deaths. They come out and it'll be an 80-year-old volunteer firefighter or somebody who, in my opinion, should not, no longer be fighting fires. And, and it's considered line of duty, and I think it's frustrating, and I think that's where some of the concern comes from. In the city of Groton, we have both, actually both departments have a pension that requires firefighters to retire at age 60. So we won't have, you know, somebody beyond that age. At age 60, they have to retire. And, you know, quite frankly, I believe this was lobbied for, this bill, and pushed through and signed on. If you look at, now doing a little research, it came across the mayor's desk at 2:00 on Thursday, and he forwarded through at 3:00 to, to us because this just came up. So we're all chasing our tails a little bit here. But, but this law was, was pushed through to help give these benefits because the job is stressful, and there are times where, you know, you go home and hours later, you, you know, drop from either, it, this, this is a stroke cardiac event or a pulmonary embolism. Those are the, those are the criteria that would, we're looking at. So to, you know, think that you could have a, a call at 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning, God forbid you get up, it's a cardiac arrest, you, you know, work that cardiac arrest, and then you go home and a couple hours later die. And now somebody, again, a politician who we, in the future, who we do not know, and the city attorney are going to sit there and say, yeah, okay, it's a line of duty, or no, it's not a line of duty. I, I don't want a legal exposure. I don't want, you know, that's my concern, to be honest and frank. Yes.
One more thing. How about the union issue as far as where they may take a stake in the situation? Being a debt person in the department is a union member. Does the head of the union also have a say as far as something like this?
No. Per, per the law, they don't have a say on the, on the determination of whether it's a line of duty.
Okay.
Do they, are, are they concerned about a possible ordinance or how, who declares that line of duty?
Right, right.
Yes, of course they are. They, the union, the state association, and now trying to get some research and all, they, they lobbied for this law. They were part of the, part of the group. They were multiples, I believe.
Okay.
Because it's police, it's fire, and it's also EMTs. Doesn't affect the city of Groton because we don't have EMTs, but it could be EMTs dependent on if they fit into a certain criteria that would benefit from somebody making a declaration for a line of duty death and therefore allowing benefits for the survivors. But the unions, you know, were for the law. Dare I say, but this is, you know, that they would be against an ordinance, you know, in most instances, you know, they would probably rather it sit with the, with the chiefs. I know our fire union would because I have talked to the president, who happens to be my brother, you know, full disclosure.
My concern is where, you know, where the union, where their take is. And if the union under, you know, in your department is against it and the state, you know, the legislative branches have their, you know, the union, the heads of these unions that say, oh, you know, let's go with it, you know, you have that disconnect that.
Yeah.
You know.
Again, you know, I can't speak for any of those people that, you know, they would obviously. And if this moves forward, there will be time for them to come before you, you know, in public, in a public forum. But do my experience, I mean, I could bring people in, you know, here that put in benefits for. Now, if we declare it line of duty, you cannot use that for workers' compensation. That's part of the law also. So they could not say, oh, the chief declared it line of duty, therefore it's a workers' comp claim. But they used to have heart and hypertension, which covered all cardiac incidences, on duty, off duty. They covered you, and that, that has sunset, so there are some people who grandfathered. But new employees do not have that anymore. But I know of employees who, you know, put in a claim for heart and hypertension, which is non-refutable. That's the law. It can, you don't have to argue it. It's presumptive that it's job-related no matter what, and they get denied. And they get denied and they, you know, because, why? I don't know why. Why? Because that's what insurance companies do. Why? Because everybody's trying to, you know, limit their liability, and that's what I'm afraid of. I'm afraid of lawyers and politicians, sorry, no, you know, getting involved now saying, I'm going to make a decision that's, you know, limits our liability. And that, that's my concern with, with an ordinance.
Now, with that ordinance state, you know, in that regard, is there a, you know, an amount, a dollar amount for this type, you know, is this ordinance reference specific dollar amount or anything like that?
The ordinance, you know, only, I believe, and the declaration is only that it was a line of duty death. If it's considered a line of duty death, then there are federal laws and state laws that then kick in and allow the benefits to the survivors, to the surviving children, and things like that. So, but the ordinance doesn't attack, doesn't give any money or anything. It's just the declaration of, in the line of duty.
Okay.
So to answer your question a different way, the collective bargaining agreements in the fire does have service connected and not service connected. And then the police also has death benefits that are service connected and not service connected. So I will let the deputy, deputy mayor speak, and then I have some other things that I want to say. Deputy Mayor Depot, you have the floor.
Well, first I wanted to ask if the police chief also wanted to weigh in before the council asks questions because I have a feeling that some of our other questions might be answered by.
So I differ in my opinion a little bit than, than Chief Tompkins does, but he did raise some good points. So EMT, fire, police, first responders, we have a history of heart and hypertension. That's why there was protection for us in the past regarding that. That's not based on any folklore. There's been multiple studies done. Our life expectancy is a lot less than the US public is when they retire, and that was the reason for the presence of that. This kind of line of duty death that's present when, within the statute is not what you usually see on TV, right? For fire and EMS and us, unfortunately, that tends to be a rather violent, rather sudden type event. It's clear cut. It occurred right there. And, and whether it's, you know, these guys run into a burning building or us confronting an armed subject, everybody can pretty much pinpoint that that is absolute line of duty. This has to do with the cardio type process, right? So this is, you know, one of these was a pulmonary embolism. Well, I'm no expert on pulmonary embolisms, nor would I know where to go looking for one. I understand the pressures and the stressors, and I certainly understand what the job brings, and, and we all do when we accept this type of position. So my take on this was, and initially there was a draft that had some may language in there as far as the spokesperson for the city or the determining, determining factor. And my request on this was to change that to shall. So now there's a shall process. I think that that eliminates the solo type approach to it. Chief is 100% correct. It works right now in this room because of our character, our communication style, and our approach. I can have a discussion with the mayor. I can have a discussion with the fire chief. We may not agree, but everybody, you know, is given that, that opportunity to speak. If you have a rogue police chief, fire chief, at some point EMT, chief, et cetera, or a mayor that just doesn't listen to anybody and you leave it as a solo responsibility, that could hurt us. Not only are the unions not going to be happy about that, but also that will bring on litigious type action against the city. That's a definite because they're going to sue for their benefits. This does open up, like the chief was saying, this opens up state and federal benefits. Not so much on the local end. Ron does have some work to do as far as tax exemption is concerned. But other than that, there's no, there's really no cost to the city. Obviously, we lost the personnel. There is that, that personal loss. But as far as financial, that's really what we're looking at. So I'm okay with this, and all we're doing really to me is picking a spokesperson. I'm okay to this so, so long as it's consensus. In other words, it can't be, we can't go into a room and there's a minority vote on it, and that one person still gets to walk, walk away with the decision, that I would not be okay with. So long as there's a majority consensus on this. And yes, there may be two people that represent the city and two people that are representing the victim. My question then in that case is, okay, so if we have an impasse, what would the process be? You know, we'd probably have to work through that a little bit, but I'm okay so long as it's that type of format.
Okay. Ron, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Just based on what the chief said, that's what the updated language does have in there, that it does have that there is to reach a consensus conclusion with, with all the parties named, and that's in the second whereas. So that is the change that was made from the original ordinance.
All right. Deputy, so you've already spoken. Deputy Mayor Depot, you have the floor.
Thank you. So I have a few questions. My first question is actually for the mayor. This isn't the first time we've had a, a last-minute notice about a law change. This was voted on in May. Do we have a process by which we check in with, at the state level when they vote on things that affect us locally? Because this is, again, we've had this problem before where we've run into, now we're under a time crunch to make a decision on something, and we may or may not have enough time to do enough research or, you know, for the council to ask enough questions or think it over long enough. Do we already have a procedure in place to get that information, or are we putting one into place?
So CCM tends to put out information on these kind of things. I didn't find out about this until Thursday. I also depend on my state representatives to let me know that, because they voted on this. So I would hope that something this controversial, they would let me know. And I did not receive any information from either state representative. So when I've reached out to the state reps before, the comment was, well, you need to go read all the language and go through it and decipher it and figure out if it, it, it impacts you or not. So that's the challenge that we have here.
So we didn't reach out, because the legislative session ends at the end of spring, right?
Uh, yeah.
So everything that they are going to vote on this year gets voted on before June, correct?
I think so, yeah.
So we didn't reach out this year to our state representatives to see if there was any changes that affected us, because I think this happened two years ago also, where we got last-minute notice from the state reps. Is there a way we could organize a meeting with them annually that, earlier in the season?
Council, or you talking about me?
Either one.
As the mayor, reaching out to them.
I, I honestly, I think either one would be sufficient to go through what's been voted on. I mean, even Zooms, they don't have to drive down here to go through what's been voted on and how it affects us and get a little information, because another question that I would have is what were the surrounding details at the state level that caused them to vote this way? Again, if we had a little more time to ask the people who voted on it, I'd be interested to know that information, and that might be some, something that we could get if we spoke to them earlier in the season about these changes.
Well, unless she knows, so we could, I could, I guess I could reach out and say, okay, tell me what's up. Tell me what changed, tell me what laws come in. But we've reached out before and said, you know, if there are laws that have changed, because I don't know what they are, they know what they are, would you please let me know? And that is, we haven't had that. So I can, I could put that on, I could put that on a tickler to go talk to them and send them an email. I don't know, periodically during the session, at the beginning of the session, during the session, at the end of the session. I'm not sure if that's going to be anymore. I don't know if it's going to work or not, but I can take it and look at it.
I think when we had them come, we've had them come before, and it was very helpful to be able to ask them questions. Maybe it would be helpful to have, to try to schedule them for a committee, the whole meeting in June or July annually. Try to make it a habit if we can at some point to, I mean, even if they can't all come because their schedules obviously are not all conducive. But if we could have at least one of our representatives come to answer questions like these and to go over them, I think I, as a counselor, could go through the list of things that were voted on myself and form some questions for them if I knew they were coming. I think for us, that's the easiest way to go about it when we know that someone's going to come discuss a topic. It gives us time to research it ourselves and, and look into it. And I think that would be really helpful to not get blindsided by changes like this. Because we've, in the past, worked under the gun, and I don't think it produces our best results, anybody's best results, really.
Well, I agree with you. This is not optimal. I mean, when I reached out to John Burke, John Burke said he just found out last week. So, and when I talked to CCM on Thursday and Friday, they said that there's a lot of people, a lot of other municipalities that aren't, didn't know about this and that this flew under the radar completely for most, most municipalities in the state. So I don't know if that answers, if it gives you any additional information, but, I mean, it doesn't answer our specific thing, but it is, it is another thing that flew under the radar for everybody and caught most municipalities by surprise.
Okay. Can one of you explain how it works right now? So like, an example of someone is on duty, they go home, and 12 hours later, they have a heart attack and die. What happens right now when that happens?
I believe the law's passed and, you know, the fire chief or police chief would declare a line of duty, and that would change if by October 1st, the municipality has an ordinance that changes that.
Well, this says the, so right now, it falls on you guys, is what you're saying?
No.
Or, isn't that October 1st that goes into effect?
It goes into effect October 1st.
Right, so prior to that.
Nothing that governs.
No, there's nothing.
So, okay.
Well, anybody.
So that's my question. So right now, before this goes into effect, right now, how does it work? Who gets to decide that?
I think that the chiefs could say it was line of duty, but then there would be wrangling over whether that was, you know, truly line of duty at the federal level. I'm not sure if they would accept that or not, that would be. And I think, I think part of this, and I'm not positive, but I believe part of this is to tighten that all up. So it would be, you know, declared by the chief or the whoever, you know, the ordinance states. And then, then it would be a line of duty death, and the federal government would, I believe, accept that as line of duty death.
Okay.
And the benefits would.
Yeah, I think the proper answer is that we don't know what drove this. So I don't know what that discussion looked like as far as, you know. So I don't know what that discussion looked like as far as, you know, we can't, well, we can't have the chiefs doing it. The municipality has to have a say so, or the other way around. Or maybe the chiefs, you know, should have a say so. But speci, like I said, this is not the, you know, the one you read about in the news all the time. This is 24 hours up to 24 hours afterwards and it has to be connected to an incident. So they've done some work in this area in the past under mental health. So mental health, we can apply for assistance so so long as we can tie it to an incident or event. That's because of post traumatic stress. But this particular one is the first time that I've seen language tied to the cardiac type. Even though, like the chief was saying, heart and hypertension existed in the past, they did sunset that. But then I wonder if this is an attempt to return to that type of process.
Like I said before, that's why the this state association, I believe, was one of the people, you know, that lobbied this because there was heart and hypertension. So, for example, in the past, if you died from a heart attack at home, you know, on your day off, you were covered. And the municipalities complained as it was unfunded mandate. And so that law was, you know, these people were grandfathered and then anybody hired after a certain date could apply for workers' comp. But to the best of my knowledge, this is part of what my, you know, argument. Best of my knowledge, never has there been a claim for, you know, having a heart attack or cardiac problems or high blood pressure and and workers' comp, you know, taking that claim. You have to have baseline, you have to prove it now. If they workers' comp, you have to prove it. So if my guy's working and he falls down the stairs and the guy sees him fall down the stairs and he gets hurt at a fire, it's witnessed and, you know, there I say they accept that. Sometimes they do, sometimes they fight that. But if I say I have high blood pressure and it's because of the job, okay, prove it. Now, how do you prove that? And so this, I think, was part of a, hey, people can have heart attacks on the job and that would be covered, right? If I had a heart attack at a fire, it would be covered. But if I go home and 12 hours later, I have a heart attack because I worked last night and we had calls, everything I went through before, there's no mechanism, you know? And now there's a mechanism. And and again, I'm going to be frank and honest, my opinion is that, you know, CCM and and, you know, is now saying, ooh, protect yourself, decide who's going to make that decision. Don't let it be the fire chief or the police chief because you might not like that decision. I mean, my question is, why in their, in their, I think you, some of this came from a template from CCM. Why is the city attorney, what does the city attorney, why would they be deciding if it was a line of duty death? I mean, that's, that's where it scares me for down the, down the line, that who's making that decision for somebody who's been here 25 years, worked the night before, went home and dropped dead, and then the decision's going to be, oh, that wasn't a line of duty death? And what's, you know, why is that made that way?
But on the other side of, I'm sorry, I'll let you finish, please.
I do have a few more questions.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Depot, you have the floor.
So my next question is, in terms of, so I do like your change from Major Shaw. But I don't know that this is clear enough. And I, so I guess, kind of a two part question. One, has this been interpreted by an attorney? And does this mean that each person listed in this section gets one vote? Or does it mean, how in a practical sense does that work? Does everyone get a vote and then the majority wins? Or, yeah, I guess that's my question.
So we have the ordinance. This is basically codifying that the decision comes to the mayor, but the specifics, I would need to come up with a policy and have that policy on how we're going to meet and what we're going to take into effect. Because one of the things you're going to, so the first thing you have to do is determine the cause of death, right? So you're going to have to determine the cause of death to determine, is it a pulmonary embolism? Is it a stroke? Is it a heart attack? Because if it's not one of those three things, this doesn't apply, right?
Right.
So.
So my, sorry.
Go ahead, please continue then.
Well, my question is, so it says the mayor shall consult with the fire chief or police chief along with the city attorney and licensed medical professional engaged by the city to reach a consensus conclusion. To me, I interpret that as the mayor has to consult with these people. How does a consensus conclusion confirmed? I feel like this is too vague to, to, yeah, I feel like it's a little vague on how that process would work. Or what's to keep the mayor from, not you mayor, mayor, broad mayor, to, of coming out and saying whatever they want? Or saying, you know, or as the chief has kind of alluded to, saying with the city attorney, this is best for the city, even though it doesn't have a huge bearing on the city financially in terms of that. But what's to stop that from happening?
Well, I guess there's never, there's no mechanism to stop it. Even if you pass the ordinance, there's no mechanism for the mayor. If the mayor wants to come out and say, here's what we're going to do, then the mayor does have a lot of power and the ability to do that. One of the things that that I'm looking at on this is I understand what the chief's saying, but on the other side of the coin, if you, depending on what chief is in there, the chief could say every single death is a line of duty death, absolutely. And the concern that I have is we need to make sure that we understand and validate that it truly is a line of duty death because there are benefits, additional benefits that the surviving spouse can get if it is a line of duty death. And, you know, they need to distinguish between line of duty and personal medical because, for example, firefighters and sometimes police as well, work other jobs. So how do you know it's not due to that job? Not saying it's not due to the fire or the police. What I am saying is, what I, what I am concerned about is the chief down the road saying, oh, yeah, automatic. Now, this is probably going to happen few and far between, but it could happen. And so that's why I wanted to to put the ordinance there. The other issue is that I understand the situation that these guys are in. I understand the stress that they're under. I understand the hazards that they go into and that they deal with on a daily basis. The question is, determining the line of duty death, do you just automatically say, okay, they've been here for a long time and so we're going to, and and when they die, the whole family suffers here. The utility, the utility, the municipality suffers, the department, whether it's police or fire, they suffer. Certainly, the family suffers. But the other question is, do you automatically then give the spouse survivor benefits based on the disability, or excuse me, based on the service connected just because of the profession that the individual's in? That's the other thing. And lastly, ordinances can be revoked. So once this ordinance is passed, if we find that the ordinance is not working, it can be changed or it can be revoked. If we go down the path where we do nothing, and that is a choice that this council can make, if you go down and do nothing, then it automatically then goes to the two chiefs and there's no revocation process. You can't go back and and come up with a, with an ordinance in the future because the general statute does not allow that. This has to be in place by one October. Deputy Mayor Depot.
So I'm not sure that quite answers my question about the, how this process will work and how it would protect all the interested parties. My inclination is that, similar to when we have a union dispute or a contract negotiation, the council has a say and is privy to the process. I think that maybe that involving the council somehow in the process might make a more fair assessment. Just because the more people in varied positions, I think you get more of a broad look at it. Because I do agree with Chief Tompkins that I, you could have all of these people, even if the city hires a medical professional, there could be influence over them. The city hires the attorney, city certainly has influence over keeping an attorney on staff. And while it may not be a concern with these chiefs right now, I do think that it could be a concern down the road. And I don't know that this is protective enough.
So your recommendation is to get to councilmen when? In the beginning or in the event that there's?
I'm not sure.
Or in the event that there is a lack of consensus?
I'm not entirely sure.
Okay, go ahead.
I just, to reach a consensus conclusion, to me, are we saying that each of these people gets one vote? Are we saying, I I just think it's a little unclear and I think that at least if nothing else, the council should be a witness to the discussion or a witness to the information. The same way, like I said, when we've had settlements that we've had to, the council will vote to allow the mayor to accept or that type of thing where it is the mayor deciding, but bringing the information to the council to review and ask questions. I think at least that should be done. Even if the council isn't making the decision to be able to have the opportunity to ask questions and be a part of the process, I think that, to me, might make it more fair because it's a similar decision to other things that the council is involved in, I think, in terms of contracts and benefits and the way that works.
How would that work?
Yeah, we could add that as as part of the procedures and it's been done.
Would that be another whereas or would that be in, would we, would we amend this whereas?
It'd either be amending this whereas or creating another one. It's just the the question and it sounds like there may be a little bit of up in the air whether it's just to be part of the discussion or to be the actual decision, the vote on it, like as a resolution, I think is kind of what I'm hearing, but I just want to be clear on.
So to elaborate on that a little bit, so I think the concern about it being a potentially political decision, I think the council has the ability to put political pressure on the person that sits in the mayor's seat. So balancing that with the council having at least the information before the decision is made, I think would make it more fair and maybe make it more amenable to the chiefs. And I think that makes sense. Like I said, I feel like this type of decision generally involves the council. A decision, you know, we accept retirements, we vote on hirings, we, you know, and and generally, we ask a bunch of questions. But when the chiefs come and say, this is the person we want to hire, these are all the tests they've gone through, this is our data, this is what we think, you know, unless there's some kind of bonkers out there issue with the candidate, we do generally go with the consensus that has come out of the process that already happened. So the discussions that already happened in the mayor's office and with the chiefs in the hiring board and all of that. However, we still are involved in the decision and we still have the ability to push back, ask questions and have some influence if there is an issue. For example, if you brought a police officer, a candidate that was an arsonist or something, it would be like, hmm, maybe, maybe no. We don't do that. Like, we would have the ability to push back on that. So I guess that's my intent is, I think, even just having us involved in the information process and the ability to potentially push back on something that's a glaring issue. Because I think that's the thing that we're looking at is, if it's a very clear, the chief has an opinion that is very clear, but we've only got the mayor and the city attorney going, nope, we disagree, then the council can push back a little and say, wait a minute, let's look at all the facts. And I I think it would give the ability to put, to counter that political pressure. It's just an idea, but the rest.
So you are, you're still on both sides. Do you want to counsel them in the beginning or do you want to counsel them in the end? And do you want counsel to be informed? Or do you want counsel as the arbiter in the event that, that the, that there is, there's not a consensus? I'm trying, so I'm trying to understand how to, do you have a, do you have a revision in mind?
Well, I'd be kind of curious to see what the rest of the council thinks. I know that some of the other council have comments. I don't know that I.
We'll come back to you in a moment.
Okay.
If you're done. If you're not done.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
So I know that we've kind of alluded to the fact that it doesn't have a huge financial impact on the city. Can you tell us what the financial impact is to the city when there's a line of duty death that falls under this particular statute?
So if this is being determined for the use in the contract for the, under the service connected or non-service, for fire, the surviving spouse shall receive a death benefit equal to 50%. This is for service connected. For non-service connected, it would be a 25% benefit from the, from the pension standpoint. Again, it's not really clear what becomes service on service because this is kind of outside versus a workers' comp and we didn't really go into the details of it. So that could potentially, and then police is similar with the the 50% for the service connected and then 25 for the non-service connected. So there could be a pension implication to it. And then, I mean, that would be the the city thing. And then again, like the chief alluded to, there are, there are other federal and state benefits that could be triggered based on on this. But just because this is kind of new, we're not really sure how this affects the EBA at this point. But if that determination does put it into one of those, then that would be the effect from the city side.
I'm not sure, Dan, you know, would know better. And Ron, you might know. When they do an actuarial report, they they base what, you know, needs to be contributed to the pension, they take into account everything that's in that pension, including the fact that somebody could die service related. So all those assumptions are put in there, I believe. And therefore, you know, the pension has the money in order to pay that out, whether it's service connected or not service connected. There isn't going to be a cost, I don't believe, to the city where all of a sudden, oh, you got to pay another $100,000 because it's in the pension. The pension is funded and it's funded with those benefits in mind. Just like when I get my pension, if I die, my wife gets 50%. All that's, those are all assumptions that are put in the pension. And that's, you know, how they determine the contribution rates and things like that.
And Councilor Norris, you had your hand up, you're a first time speaker.
Yeah, easy part first. There are way too many law changes and bills that change every year for an organization like CCM or a municipality to track. So I think we do need to rely on state associations, professional state associations like ambulance, fire, parks, public works. Those state associations are what really drive the force here and we should connect with our department heads and ask them to keep an eye open that comes across their association newsletters and everything else. I think what's happening here is there are so many municipalities that have not had the discussion, do not know what to do or where they're going and there's no flow. So this is an attempt by the state to say, at least start to have the conversation. What I'm wondering is, I do understand we need to have an ordinance by a particular date or we're kind of behind the eight ball. But I also wonder, based on what I heard, was an ordinance can be changed at any. based on what I heard was an ordinance can be changed at any time. Is it possible to put forward some minor revisions to this so we have an ordinance in place? But then we can also add in here that we will further investigate and update within thirty days, sixty days a year, whatever. Because there are other municipalities that are having this exact situation, so why are we trying to conquer it ourselves?
Well, I did reach out to CCM, they sent me the two templates that they had and this is uh, very similar to the templates that they provided us. So, so we have reached out to CCM, it could warrant another discussion internal, I mean, we could, you know, I could send it to committee or we could do an internal discussion and figure out how to revise the ordinance. If we needed to, we could expand the ordinance to actually put down the specific kinds of things, I'm I'd rather have a procedure cuz you could change procedures easier than you can with ordinances, but.
I think my hiccup in all of this, CCM is nowhere further ahead of where we are. CCM is sitting back and they're waiting to hear from municipalities what they're doing. And they gather all these benchmarks and then make uh, some type of referral. So they're waiting also. So that's why I'm like, what can we do now?
Sure.
And then predict, but there is something that I also wanted to bring up cuz I know that some municipalities do do this. Is that they do have the police chief, the fire chief, HR, the town manager involved in that discussion. I don't know if they all have a vote versus just coming to a consensus. But like these gentlemen were saying, it is a team that sit and process it through. Most of the time, it's kind of obvious, you know, but every once in a while, there's that thing that comes up. Well, yeah, you worked twenty-four hours ago, but I just saw him chopping down a tree in his backyard. You know, so there were all those kind of conversations that come up, but um, I would just add to this and to start with where it says all police chief is and police chief. Um, I would also suggest you include the HR director. Um, only because the HR director is so critical to human resources, services. Workforce services is a better way of looking at it.
So do you, you, so for a police death, you want the fire chief weighing in on that and back and forth?
Yeah, cuz they both have a a unique perspective on the situations.
Alright, one, two, three, four, five. Okay, alright, so include the HR director, fire chief and police chief along with city attorney and licensed medical engage, okay?
My only question with that is what role would the city attorney play?
Maybe advisory as to what other municipalities have done. That, you know, that's where I'm looking at it. I'm not looking at the city attorney to to tell me, okay, you don't wanna do this because it's gonna cost you money. I mean, there is a, there is a cost to the city. Uh, it's not huge, but there's a cost and so, you know, one of the things that you know, we gotta look out, we're looking at, so we're trying to balance the needs of the city, the needs of the employee, the spouse, all that, right? And that's one of the challenges that we have here. And then the question is, so where do you weigh in on council? Getting involved in the beginning, in the middle, or in the end?
I think with that.
So if a consensus cannot be reached, then it needs to come to council?
My personal feeling would to council should stay away from it.
Okay.
That's my personal feeling.
Alright, uh, Counselor Sheffield?
Yeah, uh, and I'm sort of against the fire and police because of that union discussion of separating police and fire. Uh, because the unions, you know, may not, why is the police involved in the fire situation and and vice versa. So I I look at that as far as that protection against your employees as well as yours and, you know, as far as consideration whether someone is worthy of death benefit from something like that.
So let me address your issue. The union doesn't get a call in this. They, they have, we have a CBA, right? That is where the union is involved. So the union is already negotiated. Death benefits based on line of duty, or not line of duty, what's the word there? Service or non-service related. That's where the union gets involved.
But like I said, that's crossing over again, if you're gonna include the police discussing about fires, that part of the collective bargaining. Exactly. So that's what I'm saying, you're, you add, you're doing two separate unions.
This is not collective bargain.
Okay.
This is not, this is not part of collective bargain. This is if someone dies. Coming up with, was it a line of duty death? Did it meet the requirements for one of those three things and was it a line of duty death, period? And then based on whether it's service related or not service related, then the collective bargaining agreement kicks in.
Okay, uh, but like I said, collective bargain for two separate departments though, right? Cuz you're adding one department to join into another department, that's, that would be.
The benefits don't. Hold on a minute. Chiefs, where you at?
So, all of this is evidence-based, right? Uh, and what I mean by that is uh, it starts with the death itself, that's gonna be either unattended or suspicious. In one case, that's gonna be the ME that's involved in that. Or if it's facility attended, then that's gonna be the facility physician, family doctor, whatever it is. So that's the evidence-based piece of that. The next uh, piece of evidence that's gonna be uh, presented is, you know, it was it uh, what, what was the incident that Chief Tompkins is describing or what is the incident that I'm describing? As far as the police concerned, that that's the reason why we're connecting that incident twenty-four hours later to that death. Uh, so that gives us the main two pieces of evidence. Do I think that, and don't forget, we're not part of the union. So do I think that the fire chief can critically look at that information that I'm providing? Look at it from the point of view of a first responder and say yes or no to that? I don't have any objection to that. Party, what do you think?
I, I don't, you know. I don't have an objection to i- if that's the route you're going. I mean, I, I think we're at the start of this, my stance was there, there is a mechanism. It's, you know, you pay the fire chief, whoever that is, you pick the fire chief. You hire the fire chief, right? You pay that person a lot of money to make a lot of decisions. I make more decisions every day that it's gonna cost this city money uh, than, than this decision. This decision, I'm not sure this this costs us any money. I'm not sure where it costs us money. I could, I don't know, but like the pension is covered. I don't know where it costs us money really. But it does open up to that widow and those children, it opens up federal funds and things of that nature. And, you know, I, I think the less the better, I guess is my, you're looking at the expert in our, in our area, making a determination of whether it was line of duty, knowing what it takes to be a firefighter or a police officer, distress, distressers every day. What their, you know, workload was the day before, within the last twenty-four hours, there's certain criteria that have to be set, right, that set. The twenty-four hours cardiac event or embolism stroke, those things have to be met. And then it's just a, yeah, okay, those were met and yes, uh, it was line of duty death. Rather than, you know, making it bigger, I, in my mind, I was saying, we make it smaller. The law allows for the police or fire chief to make the determination and that's where, you know, I think it should be.
When this law came up, the whole point originally was not to take it out of anybody's hands per se, but to make it the process consistent and have one process. So that the same process is followed by wherever an event does occur. So that was the whole point. It wasn't to pull any um, power or decision-making authority from anybody, it was to come up with a policy and procedure citywide that both departments would follow. So just to kind of where this came up and why it came up with the decision to go this route.
Right, to keep it with the, the, the way the law allows it though, is the poli, would be the policy and procedure, right? I'm just, it would be the police chief or the fire chief's decision, that would be the policy and procedure.
The policy and procedure is to keep it uniform between both departments, so the same policy would be performed whether the event happened in one department or the other. That was, that's the.
That's what's driving me bringing the ordinance to the council is so that we have a consistent policy and procedure. If you look at, so the mayor makes the final decision, but you got the chief. So you got the two chiefs, you got the HR director, you got the city attorney and a licensed medical, that's five. So if you can get a consensus, right, one way or the other on that and then come to the mayor and say, here's where our consensus is. Cuz you get, cuz you break it.
I mean, I would, I would prefer probably a mediation type of scenario, which if you wanna include the five heads, if that's gonna be that type of thing, I would look at a mediation type of format to where, you know, the mediator is the final say and I think uh, we can move forward better than having you know, one by, somebody else or outnumbered three to two, something like that. Um, I think a good mediator wouldn't be a bad idea for something like this, so, you know, to get all the.
If you have the five people in the room and they are, they are presenting their case to me, I am basically that mediator. I am basically that individual. We don't need an outside person coming in to mediate.
And that's where the point, I guess, the city attorney, maybe that's that extra that maybe someone doesn't want. And that's where, you know, you would be that final call and not having the city attorney have a, you know, influence of the, of the policy, so.
I get it, um, and I agree with what you're saying, but I'm gonna flip it to the other side. Is what I heard was, wait a minute, we don't want a person to make that decision solely. Cuz we don't know who that person will be in the future. So that's why I do believe having some type of, I'm gonna use the word team to analyze and discuss it is a, is a good approach. And I do think that the mayor at that point becomes the uh, the intaker, the the person that takes the intake, the person that is gonna mediate the conversation and, and lead the conversation. And then ultimately with a team decision, make that public announcement. And I do also see your point now that the town attorney, you're absolutely right. Hey, what are other municipalities doing? You know, what are other, not only in Connecticut, but elsewhere? So I, I, I think we're all saying the same thing, that it shouldn't be a person and that it does need to be a conversation. And unfortunately, good or bad, who's gonna be mayor or not be mayor? The mayor is our CEO and, and he's the or she's the one that leads the group. Um, so that person should be the mediator, s- so to speak, but I, I, I just think it should include many individuals.
So we, so we're gonna include fire and police chief. We had the HR director, leave it was a city attorney licensed medical professional. Okay, is there anything else that we need to do to that paragraph? In order for this ordinance to pass? So what else do we need to do? Uh, in, in ord, in order to garner the four affirmative votes that I'm gonna need to pass the ordinance? Right, what else are you guys looking for? Deputy Mayor Depot, you had some comments earlier.
I think I agree with Counselor Norris. I guess my question is how how does the consensus be, like, how does that come about? Like, are we sitting in a room voting? Does someone witness it? Or we, does it have to be a majority or like?
Well, with, with five folks, we might do it in my office, but we might do it in here, we might do it in a conference.
I guess, yeah, I, I think, I think I agree with Counselor Norris and I think that.
Let me catch you off just a second. So, are, are we okay, cuz I, I do wanna, want you to continue. But are we okay with passing something this simple? And then letting me come back or, or however, to revise this ordinance to give it more detail in the future? Because you either have an orders or you don't. And if you don't, then it goes chief makes his call, chief makes his call and that's it, forever amen. If we have an ordinance, ordinance is one can be repealed, but they can also be modified. And we can put more detail in here considering that uh, in my mind, we are up against, we are, not in my mind, we are literally up against the timeline. Uh, if this is not approved by one October, then it defaults to uh, the two chiefs making the call. I'm okay with if we want to revise this or modify this or whatever you, however the council wants to do it in the future to make it so that it's it gives you more time, gives us more time and uh, that you guys can have more input. I'm okay with, I don't have an issue with that. So. Alright, go ahead.
If I could just add maybe um, going along with what you were trying to drive at deputy was what if someone, a person from council or the deputy mayor be part of that? I mean, I, I know I keep adding groups here, but I, I'm also trying to be respectful in that you know, the deputy mayor rightfully so thinks council should be in that conversation. If not sitting in a corner or being a moderator. Um, but at the same time, I don't think it needs all, all of council to be part of the conversation and discussion and decision-making.
Well, another question I would ask to that is, is this is, is this day-to-day operation? Even though it's odd and it's unique, and then it should only be brought to council if it's problem either with the final result or if there's a problem, then it comes to council. So, you know, Deputy Mayor Depot, turn the floor back over to you.
I, I think that makes sense and I am fine with passing it the way it is, uh, or
I'm gonna add a whereas, that the mayor will report the results to the council. Are you, are, are you okay with that? Alright, Danny, you, Ron, are you right, somebody write this for me. So we're gonna add a whereas, it says the mayor will report the results to the council.
Mayor, can I ask a logistical question?
Sir.
Would it be possible to add an expiration date on this? Uh, just so that it provides motivation to, for work to be done on the ordinance as opposed to just letting it sit for the next five years? Um, and not that we would do this because obviously it's in fresh in everybody's mind, but um, I think that it's important that we continue to work on this so that it is um, acceptable to all parties.
What'd that look like? Uh, so we do another whereas, this ordinance would be set, would sunset on this date unless?
Or you could do something whereas this ordinance is to be reviewed and updated by X date or something like that. Unless you wanted a hard cutoff where that it does expire if it's not addressed.
I'm, I like that. I don't know that I like the expiration necessarily. But are we okay with, I mean, what, are we okay with a year timeframe on that or do we wanna have six months? I mean.
Can you have an or, you know, it says it has to have an ordinance and I don't know, it's a legal question. Can you have an ordinance and then change? It's a legal question. Can you have an ordinance and then change the ordinance? Because?
Yes. Absolutely, you can.
With the law, you can? Okay. I didn't know if this is the ordinance, and then if you change it?
No.
You didn't have that ordinance on October one of twenty twenty-four.
It says I have to have an ordinance on October first. I'm going to have, in theory, if this passes council, Cal, and then council, then I'll have an ordinance. And then, once you're in the ordinance, you're in the ordinance process, and you can revise the ordinance. So you can also revoke the ordinance. I mean, if we see that this doesn't look like it's going to work, they revoke it, and then it automatically goes back to you guys, and we're done. Right? I mean, there are, so I understand your point of view. If you put the ordinance in there, it gives us options. If we don't put the ordinance in there, we have no options. I mean, whatever, I mean, it will sunset on one October, and it'll be at the chief's level forever and ever amen, and there's no way to undo that, unless the legislature decides to do something. And then they'll probably do something that says, takes four-thirds vote, right? I mean.
Yeah, right.
It takes seventy-five percent in order to overturn something, and we have witnessed that here.
Mayor, can I ask for the six-month timeline on this then? Because I think the impact on this becomes very important, and I'm not looking for tragedy at this point, or do I expect one to happen? But obviously, this is very impactful on an individual who may suffer these consequences. So I would like it as active as possible, so that we reach a resolution on it quickly as we can.
Okay, so internally, can we get there in six months? Ron, do you think we can get there in six months?
Yeah, I think that's, that's doable.
Chiefs, can we get there in six months?
I can reach out to CPCA. Chief, you got the state organization. This did not come over our radar. I know Counselor Norris was concerned with that before. CPCA did not put this out as one to watch for, and usually they do, so.
So if we do this for six months, what is, what is the expectation to bring it, bring it back to, because if it expires in six months, that means I need to bring it to council, what, in five months, minimum? Four months? That gives me four months to work on it? Can we get it done in four months? I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm just trying to be realistic with the pace at which things move in government in general, and with all the other stuff that we have going on. That's why, that's why it's for a year, not trying to prolong it.
I can have information available from agencies that I talk to within a few months. Actually, I'll have it by next week, but.
All right.
Yeah, certainly, I can get, yeah, whatever you need. Yeah.
Okay.
And we can evaluate on.
Let's put a six-month.
I think the, I think the ordinance is going to cost more money than the benefits, you know, by the time we hire a lawyer, a city attorney, and a doctor, those all are going to cost a lot of money, who are now going to be people in this ordinance voting, I, you know, but that's.
Now that I have some time, I will reach out to my attorneys to see if they've heard anything about, about this. But my attorneys are always, also not real fast. That's the other concern, I have about six months. But if, if that's what we, if that's what council wants, you give us six months?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll put six months in there. All right. And, all right, is there, are there any other questions or comments on this? Did you have a?
I guess from a clerk's standpoint, I'm just asking for clarification of how it's going to be written, because I need to get the legal ad published. Am I leaving the verbiage that it is authorizing the mayor to declare if it's in line of duty of death? Or am I?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. So in the yellow paragraph, we're going to put police chief and fire chief. We're going to add the HR director. We're going to add a whereas that the mayor will inform the council of the results.
Correct.
And then we were going to put in a.
A review date.
A review date. Or we're going to do review date or sunset? A review date, not a, a review date or a sunset date? Review date's what we said?
Uh-huh.
Okay, a review date. And I'm okay with that. That means it doesn't sunset. We just have to review it by, okay, I'm, I'm much more comfortable with that. But, so we're going to schedule some meetings with council, council with staff. I'll talk to Jackie tomorrow. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay. I'll take a motion to move this, the mayor and council meeting on September third.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stench, motion carries. Okay. I will take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.